I'd like to call to order the Waterworks Board meeting for November 10th, 2021, at 7:06 PM. If you're not up, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to our flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Troxel, would you please take roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson.
Here.
Public Works Annie Hanson.
Here.
Director of Operations, Mr. Jim Gorman.
Here.
Town Manager, Robert Volkman.
Here.
Recording Secretary, Robin Teal, and Clerk Treasurer, Michael Troxel, present.
Thank you. The Waterworks Board consists of three members, Tom Schmidt, Kevin Conley, and myself, Robin Arvenitis. The first item on the agenda for the Waterworks meeting is we have the minutes of the September 22nd, 2001 public meeting, the minutes of the September 29th, 2021 public meeting, and the minutes of the October 13th, 2021 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Next on the agenda is claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
So move on claims.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Next on the agenda is reports. Mr. Gorman, are there any additional reports?
No reports.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do we have any reports for the Waterworks Board meeting?
No ma'am.
Thank you. There is no old business on the agenda, and there is no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Waterworks Board meeting? Any business from the floor? This meeting is adjourned.
Call to order the redevelopment commission meeting for Wednesday, November 10th, 2021. The time is 7:08 PM. For this meeting, I will bring Councilman Caleb Johnson and Councilman Rob Getzloff back into the roll call. Minutes of the October 13th, 2021 public meeting, pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel, or anything additional?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to pay the claims.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes five zero. Enter reports from staff on redevelopment.
Reports.
Okay. Councilmembers?
No.
Thank you. Okay. We have no old business, nor do we have any new business. At this point, I will entertain business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Sheraville's Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, November 10th, at approximately 7:09 PM. The roll call, the roll call will stay the same as the redevelopment, and the first item on the agenda is the minutes from the October 13th public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next item is claims. Mr. Troxel, any additional claims from the utility board?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to pay the claims.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second on claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Reports. Any reports from staff, Mr. Gorman or Mr. Hanson?
No reports.
Councilmembers?
No, sir.
No report.
None. We have no old business. We have no new business. At this time, I'll open it up to the floor. Are any comments from the floor regarding utilities? Any comments from, please step up and state your name and address.
I'm Pat Jones, 1871 Fish Horn Drive. And I was wondering about whether or not we were staying or going into that Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. Are we...
We're staying.
We're staying. Yeah, we voted to stop that removal process 29th. Is that what it was?
Okay, I didn't know if that, I was here that night for that meeting, and I heard that, but I thought maybe it said come November 10th for sure that you guys aren't doing that.
Yeah, we backed out of it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be sure. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Glad you're here.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor regarding utilities? Any other business from the floor? This meeting is adjourned. We'll move right into the town council.
I'd like to call the town council meeting for November 10th to order at 7:11. I will accept the roll call from the utility board. The minutes of the October 13th, 2021 public meeting, pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel, any additional claim?
No additional claims for town council, Mr. President.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Gorman, you want to call for the reports, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Patterson, do you have any reports from fire?
Yes, I just wanted to report for the month of October. The Sheriff Fire Department responded to 291 EMS calls, 49 fire-related calls, for a total of 340 calls for the month of October. I also wanted to report that we had five full-timers finish the completion of the hiring process. Two of them will be starting on Monday, November 15th. The other two or three will be starting November 22nd, bringing that, building in those supply voids that we had, bringing our staff back up where it's supposed to be. Also, once the Safe Order accounts proves the town's budget, we will start the hiring process to increase our staff to additional full-time firefighters. Hopefully, while we started in the beginning of 2022.
Excellent.
It's great to hear, Chief. Thank you.
It is. Thank you guys for hiring us. We appreciate it. That's all.
Deputy Chief Meyer, any reports?
Anything to report, sir.
Police Chief Sormas.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. I just wanted to report that this year, again, the Sheriff Police Department is supporting the Toys for Tots program again, and that's basically a program where the, we collect unwrapped new presents at the police department for needy families in our community, and all the family, and all the toys collected will go to the families in our community. So, the drop-off box is located at the police department in the front lobby, and the lobby's open 24/7. It can be dropped off at any time. And the program usually collects presents, October, November, and December, in preparation for the Christmas holidays. So anybody that can donate to some needy families here, it would be greatly appreciated.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief McNamara?
Hello. I'd also like to update us on the hiring process, just to let you guys know. We are excited to announce that four officers will be sworn in on Monday, November 15th at 9:00 AM, and we have two more in the process that we're hoping to get a few weeks later after that point. Once they get hired in, they will go through in-house training, field training, and get ready and prepare them for the academy in January. That's it.
Thank you. Superintendent Novosich?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gorman. A quick announcement. The Park Department, along with the American Legion and VFW, will be hosting the annual Veterans Day remembrance ceremony tomorrow at 6:00 PM across the street at the memorial.
Thank you, Mr. Novosich. Mr. Hanson?
Sheraville received a grant from the Indiana Department of Transportation for $608,346.46. That's a 50-50 match. We will be doing approximately 34 roadway segments next year. So that's good news. That'll be later on in the meeting. We need a resolution saying the council president can sign off on those contracts. That's it.
Mr. Volkman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of things I'd like to report on. One is that we actually started putting up the town Christmas decorations this week, and one of the, one of the ideas that came across is possibly adding some decorations to our town welcoming signs and also to some of the subdivision signs. And with your authorization, I would like, you know, to spend about $500 on some additional decorations to do some of these various signs throughout the community to enhance them.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to talk about is I know there's been a lot of discussions on social media regarding puppy mills and the new store that's opened here in Sheraville called Happiness's Pets, and it's caused us to actually review. We have several animal control ordinances in place in Sheraville, and we reviewed those, and I would recommend that we do some updating on them because they deal with a lot of, a lot of things. They're all dated, ones from the 90s, ones from the early 2000s, and there certainly needs some provisions updated, and also to make provisions within our zoning ordinance that would preclude puppy mills and such from being here in town. We do have one new pet store that opened up. They're actually affiliated with Purdue University's School of Veterinary Science, and they only deal with certified breeders, not, not puppy mills. Puppy mills, as I understand it, are places where they, the animals are kept in unsanitary conditions and constantly bred for the animals. So I know that there's a lot of work that goes in by Happiness's Pets. They were vetted twice by our BZA, and all those, there's been on social media that that's a puppy mill. I don't believe that's the case. I think they've shown themselves to be a responsible pet supplier, but with your authorization, I'd like to work with Attorney Austin to make those amendments to our ordinances to deal with this subject and to tighten up our controls as well.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to move forward with reorganizing and recodifying new updated ordinances for animal control and pet stores.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
One, a couple of things I wanted to bring up. You know, through the vetting process, I think it's important to know, as Mr. Volkman mentioned, there's been a lot of misinformation, a lot of it. You know, the, and I'm not defending the pet store. Mr. Burning is here tonight at the, at the end of the meeting. If you have any questions for him, he'd be happy to answer when we get to the public comment portion. But I do know that the owner specifically requested that all the breeders be affiliated with Purdue University. I spoke at length with somebody from the Purdue program, and I will tell you, there are pretty stringent guidelines, you know, for the breeders. They're audited, they're inspected on an annual basis. And then, you know, I had asked the owner a couple of questions just in terms of, you know, what happens to, you know, the puppies that don't sell. And the answer is, they all sell. Yes, they come at a higher price, but there's also overhead costs, you know, for that business. So, you know, through that vetting process and follow-up conversations with the owner, especially with Purdue University, it doesn't get much more credible than that, than having that partner. And I also asked a question of the Purdue rep, you know, define a puppy mill. What is that? She simply said it has to do with the condition where the dogs are bred. A poor, a poor-conditioned breeder location is defined as a puppy mill. She couldn't have been more emphatic about the breeders and their program. They do follow their guidelines, that they are inspected, they are audited. So that discussion happened during the vetting process and even after, you know, with all the social media activity. You know, we did our fact-finding, and I think the facts will support versus the misinformation that's been out there, especially over the last month.
Do any of the council members have any questions for the owner at this time? If we do, we'll have them come up.
I'd like to know how often...
Okay, Robin.
Yes, I do.
Yeah. Please say your name and the address of the business for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Jonathan Burning, and the address is 1525 US 41.
John, you can pull that microphone right out of there. Just pull it out. Pull it. There you go.
Okay.
How often are the breeders audited? When it states on this paper that they're audited carefully, how often are they checked?
Yes, ma'am. So they're currently audited every 16 months. However, I do know that Purdue is in discussions of making that annually.
So only once every 12 months would someone go in and check that it's not a puppy mill?
Correct.
Anyone else? Question?
My understanding is also that you maintain on-premises records of where the puppies came from, what breeder, their certification records and such on premises, so that anybody who's coming in to look for a puppy can say, "All right, I, I want this puppy. Where did it come from? Where was it bred?" and look at their certifications and things.
Yes, sir. Correct. So what we do at our store is, on every puppy available for sale, there's a disclosure document that shows the breed, the sex, the date of birth, the puppy's microchip number, the breeder, the sire and dam, the mom and dad, their registration numbers, if they're purebred registered, as well as a complete medical history, including vaccinations, and if they had to go to a veterinarian for any kind of medical treatment as well.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Chief Sormas?
Just one question, John.
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Good.
We spoke on the phone. Also, I just wanted to inform everyone that our Animal Control Director did make an inspection on the premise there in our town here, and everything was in compliance. And then just the information that I reviewed shows that the store does go above and, above and, above and beyond the standards set forth in the industry. So we commend him on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. One, one more question, Mr. President. Sorry. Just as far as your guys' premises there, how many puppies do you have, and what's like the maximum capacity, so to speak? How closely are they kept? How long are they out? You know what I mean? Like, how are they maintained there?
Right. So I would say capacity is probably 60 puppies, 55 or so. On average, we probably have about 35 to 40. They get most of their socialization with consumers throughout the day and with the staff as well.
I see.
So if, I have a question also. If a breeder is trying to be Canine Care certified, they do that for, through Purdue first?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
And is that how you decide which breeders you're going to use? It's only these Canine Care certified breeders? There are no other ones?
It is absolutely correct. Every puppy in our store originates from a Canine Care certified.
And do you keep track of the auditing? Do you ask Purdue?
Yes.
How often they've audited?
I have a copy of one of the audit records as well, if I can email it to everybody on the council as well.
I was just wondering if you keep up on the year or if they're keeping up on it?
Yes. So as soon as the audit company, which is Validus, as soon as they complete the audit, they give us a copy as well. So we have all copies maintained to make sure they're current.
And you feel a year is a significant amount of time to wait to audit? I mean, you're just going based on what Purdue's telling you?
Correct.
So a year?
Right. Well, it's currently 16 months, but like I said, Purdue is changing it to 12 months, I believe.
No other questions. Thank you.
Nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Anything else, Bob?
Only other comment I would like to make is that we don't have any puppy breeders at all in Sheraville that are on a commercial basis, so that you would constitute as a puppy mill. There's not one that exists in Sheraville that has actually, that we're aware of. So they're not registered. There's no breeding businesses at all that we have registered.
Councilmembers, anything else?
I, as far as the pup, pets, or are you saying?
Anything.
Okay, I do have one other thing. We had, Lake Central Education Foundation had a 5K.
You guys need to vote. You've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Oh, that's right.
Well, I'm sorry. Yes, I did. All right. So we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thanks for catching that, Bob. Sorry.
Thank you.
So I did have a report on the Lake Central Education Foundation 5K that happened this past weekend. It was a, an effort, and we had a great showing in support of the Lake Central Education Foundation. I wanted to bring it up today just because our, our police and fire were out there in, in great numbers and in great support of the event, making it a safe event for many, many young kids and families walking on the streets and in the subdivisions near Lake Central. And so I wanted to thank them for coming out and supporting that event and for any of the public that supported it as well. We raised somewhere over $18,000. So it's, it was a great event, great fundraising thing, and we appreciate everybody's support.
Very good. Councilwoman, anything?
No.
Hey, Mike?
No, thank you.
Before we begin with the rest of the meeting, I'd like to give the Andrian, the girls volleyball team, a shout-out. They were the state champions this weekend, past weekend, so congratulations to the Andrian girls for a fine job.
Definitely.
At this time, I will open up the floor to the public for public comment regarding agenda items.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Oh, never mind. I thought you were at my area. Never mind.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Anyone with public, anybody with a public comment regarding the agenda items tonight? Okay, hearing none. I will close the floor to the public.
This just has to do with the agenda, this just has to do with the agenda items that you see on the, on there, yeah.
There will be, there will be open public comment at the end.
Right, right at the end, yeah. Okay, there is no old business, so under new business, we have a public hearing. Mr. Austin, are the proof publications in order?
Mr. Troxel.
Or Mr. Troxel, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the, this particular ordinance needed to be advertised. We did send the advertisement to the Times and Post Tribune. We received a verification from the Times and did not receive verification yet from the Post Tribune, but everything appears to be in order.
Want to carry through on the rest?
Yes. Being that this is a public meeting, the...
Mike, we can't hear you.
I have a different microphone today. How's that? Is that better? How we doing? Is that better? I got two microphones. You okay? We okay? Thank you. This ordinance number 1974 is before the council members here in reference to additional appropriation and a reduction for appropriations. We're required by law to advertise these, which we have, and we're also giving the taxpayers an opportunity to speak for, against the appropriations if they want. The additional appropriations are for items that were not budgeted in the 2021 budget, but monies we received in that are requested by the departments to spend. So, the additional appropriations we're asking this evening, the council to consider, is a non-park reverting fund totaling $53,250 for additional spending. And money, like I said, we have the money in hand. We got more money in than we anticipated. The other item that we're looking for in additional appropriations is for the community crossing grant funds totaling $493,126. So total additional appropriations we're requesting are being requested is $546,376. In addition to that, we're also looking at reducing some funds out of the 2021 budget, and that is $200,000 out of the Administration or General Fund for that. So if any taxpayer at this time would like to speak or have questions regarding it, now's the time to do that. Mr. President? You, you can close the open portion.
We are going to close the floor on ordinance number 90, 1974, which is an ordinance providing for additional appropriations in the park, non-reverting, and community crossing grant funds, and a reduction in the general. Administration fund of the town of Sheraville for year 2021, and all matters related thereto.
Mr. President, there's a two reading, this is a two-reading ordinance.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. President, move to approve ordinance number 1974.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Troxel.
Just one more comment. Thank you for the action this evening. What happens now is this information, this ordinance gets submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance, they will make sure there are sufficient funds that we have in order to do these appropriations for this. So I will receive a positive or negative response from the Department of Local Government regarding these. They'll also take note that we are also reducing our budget for 2021, which will help for our 2022 budget in determining when they do some cuts on our budget. So it is a positive thing for communities to do this at this level here. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Troxel. The ordinance number 1975 is an ordinance establishing compensation salaries and wages for officials and employees of the town of Sheraville, Lake County, Indiana, classifying certain positions of employment together with rates of pay, repealing and amending prior ordinance in conflict herewith and declaring that an emergency exists. Mr. Volkman?
I'll let Mr. Gorman handle it.
Okay, Mr. Gorman?
Mr. Chairman, this is basically the salary ordinance that we update every year, and it repeals all past ordinances, and it does include a 3% raise in that ordinance.
Okay, very good. Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve ordinance 1975.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Resolution 2021-16 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Sheraville, Lake County, Indiana, concerning authorization for execution of indot agreements. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, this is an ordinance that indot requires us to have in place just to authorize the town council president to sign any future indot projects or contracts, as well as the CCMG authorization for, to move forward with those. And it's basically a sign, they've changed it to a signatory, electronic signatory page. So that's what that resolution's in place for.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Yeah, I don't, they didn't, right?
Consider variance of use to allow a drive-through lane within the US 41 Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Board of Zoning Appeal Case Number 21-10-21, the location is 1675 US 41 Baker Square Site redevelopment. Petitioners, Sheraville Management LLC, Jordan Chapman, and Reader Corksy. BZA approval, favorable recommendation with conditions 3-0. Mr. Weezer, you want to come up and, and, anybody has any questions for, for Mr. Weezer on this issue?
I guess tell us what's going in. That's what my question would be.
I guess for purposes of the record, my name's Jim Weezer. I'm the attorney for the project with the law offices located at 429 US 30. That's, what we're talking about, so if members of the public are interested, is the building that houses the current Baker Square just north on US 41, north of 30 on US 41. That building, the intent of the project is to demolish the building, and the building will house two tenants and two commercial tenants, and one of the tenants is requiring a, requesting a drive-through. And as you know, the US forty-one Commercial Corridor Overlay doesn't permit that currently, so there was a requirement to obtain a use variance and the, and the public hearing was held at the BZA and the BZA recommended approval.
Which tenant is requiring the drive-through?
Well, not sure how to answer that. I guess it's, there was an understanding that the information until it got to a certain point was going to be held confidential as to who the tenant was, but the tenant, I bet since it's now, cat's out of the bag, the tenant's Starbucks. The proposed tenant, I better say it that way, the proposed tenant is.
Yeah, well, thanks, Jim.
Sure. And, and I, I saw the plans, I was at the BZA hearing for this, so I saw the plans and I, I saw the layout and things, and there's, my understanding is there's a stacking plan that they have proposed. How many cars are they proposing to have stacked for the drive-through for this, this national coffee chain?
The, let me get this out. The, there's, there's dedicated for stacking fourteen cars. There's additional availability on, there's availability on the site for additional cars as well, for about seventeen additional cars, but in terms of the stacking itself, the stacking is fourteen vehicles.
I've got to be honest, Jim, I, I mean, I sat through it, the hearing, and, and I think everybody was concerned about the amount of stacking, making sure there was enough and making sure we weren't overflowing and interfering with, you know, there's a second tenant that's going to go in there, thirty-eight hundred square feet space requiring thirteen spaces for parking, and, and so I think everybody's concern at the BZA was, is there enough stacking for this, for this drive-through? And I'm concerned that fourteen isn't enough and it's going to interfere, so I, I guess I have, I'll, I'll put that out there. I, I don't know what the solution is, I don't know if there's a rework possible to try and fit more. I'd like to see eighteen or twenty be able to stack in there. Maybe there's a way to, to double up the lane so that you have two ordering locations. I know I see McDonald's doing that, where they double up their lane, two ordering locations, and they filter down into a single. I don't know if there's a, there's a way to rework that and maybe get a, a few more or six more or something like that, cars into the dedicated lanes so we can make sure this other tenant isn't interfered with.
Yeah, thanks, Caleb, I appreciate that. We, I guess there's always a way to talk about it, there's, engineering-wise, there's almost always a way to do something. I, I can't make any promises or guarantees, but it's our intent to meet this coming Monday in study session with the Plan Commission. I know that's going to be the focus of, of the comments and, and concerns. It, it's the position of, of the engineers who have, who have engineered a number of these nationally, that fourteen is, is more than sufficient and, and is, and is either consistent with or slightly above the national average. I, I think, I, I know, living here myself, that, oh, I don't drink coffee, living, living, living here myself, I, I know that there's, in the back of everybody's mind, I'm just being candid about it, is the situation at Maine and forty-one.
It's terrible.
Which is a terrible situation. That design is, hasn't been used for years, as I understand it, and they all recognize that. There's really no comparison because in this particular instance, if you look at where this is going, there are a number of entrances. I mean, you, you could come off of US thirty and, and go through Walmart and use the roadways that are there. You can, and, and I think the one important, and I don't want to forget about this, I think the one important issue is there is no direct access to forty-one, and I think that's a positive thing.
I do too.
It is.
Dunkin' Donuts is a, interesting.
It's a nightmare, yeah.
Yeah, good way to put it.
So, so without that, you could enter off of forty-one at the light, you could come in off of thirty, either at the light at Walmart or that entrance by BP. So there's a, and, and so there's a, a lot of ability to maneuver. There's also going to be, and I think this is important, a cross-access easement agreement with the Verizon and Five Guys business to allow for some additional alleviation of any problems. So I think all those things are being taken into consideration, Caleb. I think it's a good point that you raised, and we fully intend to address that with the Plan Commission.
The, the second, the second concern again with traffic in that area that I have is, is this second tenant that comes in going to be high traffic in the morning as well? You know what I mean? So, so are we going to bring in a, a nutrition shop or something that's going to have thirty-two cars in the parking lot coming in to get their, their smoothie and their shake first thing in the morning? I, I just want to make sure we're approving the right people for this area and what, and what the design is, you know? So I would be concerned about just giving a blanket approval here without knowing who the second tenant is, what kind of business hours they run, maybe they're the same type of business hours where they peak seven to nine, just like this national coffee chain, and four to six PM, you know what I mean? I, I don't want them to have the same peak hours that, that the coffee chain does. And then we're double trouble, you know?
Yeah, I, I can tell you, I'm not aware, I don't believe there's, there's a second tenant who has committed, and I'm not aware of that.
And that's what they said at the BZA, and I...
Right, and the second tenant, they're, they're, the developer is very cognizant of the fact that the second tenant should be a business that doesn't in any way conflict with the peak hours of the, of the Starbucks operation because it would be inconsistent and it wouldn't make sense for that, for that business as well. That was the reason we've worked with, with Five Guys and Verizon, because they don't have the same hours that we do. And they recognize that, and we do, I say like I, that, that the client does.
Client does.
So they, they recognize that, and I, I think that everybody's working towards the same goal. I, I think here what we're talking about is they use variance to, just to allow the drive-in, and I get your concerns, I, I understand that, but I think that, and it was clear that the, the BZA made appropriate findings consistent with that, making the favorable recommendations, so, but those are all things we'll be discussing with the Plan Commission as we move forward, because there's some, as you probably know, Caleb, since you were at the meeting, there's either a waiver or potential variances that may be needed, that discussion is going to take place, I believe, at the Plan Commission on Monday, so that's another, those are other factors as well.
Well, the, the BZA put a condition on the approval for the, for the drive-through that the second tenant would have to be disclosed and come back. I don't, I, I'm concerned that their condition wasn't to say, we have to approve it, you know what I mean? Their, their condition was, you just have to come back before us, and I don't know what the, what the hitch was, you know, so to speak, and, and whether or not there was anything that they were going to do with it. They didn't make it contingent on them approving who the second tenant is, and I think that that's something that I would like us to do here, to make sure that if this is approved for a drive-through, that the second tenant has to be approved as well so that we, we know who's going in there and that they're not going to interfere with us, with, with the area.
Just tell me it's not going to be a mattress place, though.
No mattress firm?
No mattresses.
Mr. President?
They're everywhere, I, can't be a mattress.
Mr. President, I have one other question. I, I saw on the plans, and I know this is probably more of a Plan Commission issue, but where's the loading zone? There's no loading zone in the area of this, and, and how are they planning to, to bring materials in and out of there, if you know?
I, I agree, I, I couldn't even begin to answer that. I haven't even seen the engineering plans, I've just seen the use variance request and, and what goes into a use variance request, and that will be discussed at the Plan Commission, I have no idea.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions, council members?
Thanks, Jim. That's it, Jim, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes?
At this point, I, I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance of use to allow the drive-through within the US forty-one Commercial Corridor Overlay District, but with the conditions that there would be twenty cars stacked for the drive-through as opposed to fourteen as proposed, however they re-engineer that to, to, to fit twenty cars, that's what I'd like to see. And I'd also like to see that, that there's a condition that the second tenant, whenever they are identified to come in, that they would have to go back before the BZA to present their hours and tenant, or, or expectations for traffic so that we don't have a interfering set of businesses here.
Okay.
We have a motion?
Excuse me?
Yes?
Do you want to add anything to that motion related to the certified findings of the BZA that came to you?
The three of them there?
Yes.
With, with their certification?
And, and I guess I should say that my motion is based upon the certified findings of the BZA and that, which I, I don't even see them here, so, and adopts those as part of our findings of fact here for our decision.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Austin, what, at our level at this point, are we allowed to put conditions on a, on a, a variance request? Because aren't we here tonight just to allow, allow or disallow the drive-in, the drive-through?
Yes, but you are a quasi-judicial body, and as such, you're vested with the authority to make the final decision, as you indicate, and that can be with conditions, may be with conditions, as you deem appropriate.
But the planning of it would have to go through the Planning Commission, correct?
No, no, this is, this is a standalone from the Plan Commission unless you connect or marry the Plan Commission approval or action to your determination tonight about the variance of use, and that could be another condition. Doesn't need to be, but it could be.
I'll second Councilman Johnson's motion.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. We'll call for the vote on this. Mr. Traxel?
Councilman Caleb Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Gavin Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Abernitis?
Yes.
Councilman Rob Getzler?
Yes. Motion approves five zero. Consider release of casherries and certificates of release for the following: Golf View Manor Unit Four, one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars; Hall's First Edition, one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents; Paragon Edition, seven thousand seventeen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Mr. Vote, Jim, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is three small developments that meet all the standards that we have in place in our ordinance. Staff has made final inspections and, of the site, and it's appropriate to release those cashierities at this time.
Okay, pleasure of the board?
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Mr. President, I, I have to go. I'm going to step out.
Okay, no problem. Consider acceptance of permanent easement agreement, parcel two, between Eli Vuco and Deborah Vuco and the Town of Shererville, the Pensy Greenway Trail. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is another property where we required permanent easements just to do some drainage work along Pensy Trail Phase Four, which is at the far south end of, of town, and there's three of them on the agenda tonight. They're all permanent and there's only about a little over a thousand square feet of all three easements that we need to require, and homeowners of, property owners have signed off on them and looking for your approval on those to continue working on the trail.
Mr. Austin, since they're all the same, can I group them as two, two A, and two B?
You may.
Okay, so I am looking for a motion from the board on grouping them under two, two, two A, and two B.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance of donations deferred from September's meeting for two thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and one cents. Mr. Traxel, can you read those, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Donation to the town, donation fund to town hall. We have Justin Knight Chick-fil-A gift cards, thirty of them at four dollars each. It's an in-kind donation totaling one hundred and twenty dollars. Donation fund Fire Department, also from Justin Knight at Chick-fil-A gift cards, twenty-four of them at seven dollars and thirty-nine cents each. Total in-kind donation was one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. We had also the Fire Department Anonymous Resident donated forty dollars in cash. We have the Police Fund, donation fund for the Police Department, Justin Knight Chick-fil-A donated thirty-five gift cards at seven dollars and thirty-nine cents each. That total in-kind donation was two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Donation fund to the Police Equipment, the American Union Riders Chapter Six Nine Seven donated five hundred dollars, and Corset Oran donated fifteen for a total of five hundred and fifteen dollars to the Police Equipment Fund. The donation fund for the Fire Equipment Fund, Enterprise Products Pipeline Company donated seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and Greg's Place donated six hundred and ninety dollars, totaling Fire Equipment Fund one thousand four hundred and forty dollars. So we had a total of in-kind donations, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and one cent. Total monetary donations, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, with a grand total donations, two thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and one cent.
Pleasure of the board?
So moved on donations, thank you.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. At this time, we will take comments from the floor. When you come up, please state your name and your address. Any comments from the floor? Come on. This is your chance now. Okay, very good.
Lauren Duran, fifty-five, West Elizabeth Drive.
Okay.
We just wanted to address the issues of speeding...
Pull the mic down, so you're talking into the mic there.
Speeding drivers on Elizabeth's Drive. All of you should have gotten a letter from us.
Yes.
We kind of spread it all out, we spelled it, spelled it all out, all the different issues that were happening.
Right.
The main concern are the speeding drivers, and we have no sidewalks, and we're only talking about Elizabeth's Drive between Austin and Anna.
Right.
It's a long stretch, there's no sidewalks, and in the letter, we did document some of the things that have happened in the past with accidents, animals being killed, we can't walk on the street, things like that. So we were looking for some resolutions for this.
Yeah.
We kind of got our hopes up when we started seeing some speed bumps or speed humps showing up around town, so we were looking at that as one of the resolutions.
Mr. Chief Sermas, would you like to comment where we're at with this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Since we received that letter, we did step up the patrols in that area, and we were monitoring that day in and day out for about ten days. We put a radar and a counter out there, and we were detecting that the speeds were averaging thirty-six, but they're posted for twenty-five, and we did enforce that by either citing the driver with the warning or with the citation, and currently, right now, I see it, the traffic at that level. My next step is to get a car count on that street, and we're trying to decipher the number of cars going through that subdivision in a, in a period of time. So I don't have all the data yet, but right now, we're just currently enforcing that area, and I also have my patrol commander here, Michael Bark, who's watching that, who's maintaining the data on that on a daily basis, and for right now, we believe we have a good handle on the vehicles coming in there, because most of the vehicles stopped in that area, a very large percentage of them come from that area, and that's not a through street, it goes into another subdivision, so for right now, I would just recommend the continuous enforcement of that area. So for right now, I would just recommend the continuous enforcement of that area.
Over the years, we first brought this up about 35 years ago. As more and more traffic showed up, I mean, all the neighborhoods behind us do use that street to cut through to, over to Austin to get out to 30. And vice versa, they're coming in off of Austin. Because I see the cars going into Lundberg and going down Anna. We've had altercations over the years with people and they've been in subdivisions behind us. So we consider it a through street.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. Yep.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a long stretch.
Yeah, it's a long stretch without a stop sign.
And there's really no, there's no really obvious spot to put a stop sign. Because there's no cross streets or intersections down there, just one stretch of road. And there's driveways that butt up to the street near right there, no sidewalks in that area as well.
Yeah, right where Helena is, that kind of goes off.
Yeah.
It's a little bit further down, but not further enough, but.
So you think if we were to put sidewalks down, is that going to help any? I'm just, I'm just asking because that's what I heard from her, so.
Oh, no. We're kind of hoping for speed humps.
That definitely isn't going to solve the problems of the cars. You know, unless they're going to drive on the sidewalk.
But if you can slow them down.
Slow them down.
Mm-hmm, with the speed bumps.
So we are, we are still looking at it. Why anybody would really want to head east to get from, from there to Austin Avenue is beyond me because.
Yeah.
I mean, I live right there on Normandy myself. I would never go that way in the morning.
I know, it's a nightmare trying to get out to Austin.
It is, it's terrible. So, the other thing is too, I don't know, we, we're going to have to check and see what kind of traffic flow we have, how many cars are going. You know, whether it deems, you know, putting a speed bump there, whether it deems make it a one-way street. We are still going to take it, take a good look at it and keep monitoring and see what's happening. So, you know, that's, those have been the orders that the chief has been given.
Okay, because we're, I guess it's not so much the amount, but it's the speeding.
Well, I, I understand. And, you know, we have that problem unfortunately in every subdivision that we, we have here in Sherrville.
Right.
I, I have the same thing down my street on Normandy Road.
I know.
You know, there's certain people that live way down and I'm not going to name names, but they come and they, you can hear them in the mornings souping it up there.
Right.
And it's like, you know? And the only thing we can do is ask, alls we can do is ask the police to kind of, you know, find a good location and tuck, tuck themselves in. And when they're, when they're caught speeding, give them a ticket that they're not going to forget.
Yeah, we've offered our driveway.
I know, and that's.
Thank you very much.
It's great, so. But we're still, we're still working on it, so.
Okay, because, yeah, because there's different times of the day when the traffic's worse.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I can also, after the meeting, we have our patrol commander, we're prepared to meet with them.
Okay, so.
Speak with them also.
So if you guys want to speak to the chief and the control, you know, the traffic control, I mean, uh, police officer and that, please do so because they're the ones that are going to be taking care of that detail until we get some numbers.
Okay, yeah. That's all we want, speed bumps. I think that'll do it.
Um, okay, we, I can't have you yelling from the seat.
I know.
If you, you want to come up, just state your name and your address.
All right.
Okay?
Okay, so as long as it's being.
It is being looked at right now, yes.
We appreciate it.
Oh, and.
I'll just add one thing, the, the speed humps came as a result of exploring many traffic calming measures. That wasn't the option we came up with. There were traffic counts, there were ongoing patrols. We really had to make an educated move before we did anything. You know, we looked at, gosh, chief, how many, three different options?
Oh, yeah, more than that. We, some were eliminated obviously right away, but we spent most of the year evaluating that over there in Plum Creek.
Yeah, there, there is a process and I will tell you that, I know chief is handling it, you and I talked on the phone, I assure you he is. And if your chief or patrol commander, Michael Bork, will get back with you about a potential solution. But there's got to be some steps that has to happen first.
Okay.
Okay?
And I know we're just a little street.
No, it's, you know, it's about safety.
Yes.
Anything we do is about safety.
Everybody's valuable.
Right.
Okay, um, you know, we don't put things in just because, you know, we don't add a stop sign because we just think it should go there.
Right.
You know, there, there's got to be, there's got to be an evaluation that has to take place. So give us a chance, okay? I know this has been going on, you know, for a while. We've got ongoing communication, you know, and I assure you, we'll get back with you with our findings and, and recommended solution, whatever that may be.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Any other comments from the floor? If you want to come up, sir, or ma'am, I'm sorry, can't see back there. I just saw a hand, so.
Thank you very much. My name is Barbara Tesper and I'm right in the middle of the block, 3 West Elizabeth. And I have witnessed quite a number of cars just zipping by. They must have been going at least 40, 50 miles an hour, coming straight from US 30 onto my street. I have seen like squirrels get run over and there's a few cats that have, that have been run over. And I myself, when I'm turning into my driveway, have been heckled by other drivers that, where they didn't think I was going fast enough. That's been my experience. And then also, I don't think the, the street is safe for anybody on our block because we have mailboxes right by the street. And when you're going out there to get the mail, you're putting your life in your hands. So I would appreciate if the town would address this issue and take it seriously and come up with a good solution.
We will, as soon as we, like I said, we just need to, we talked about this last week and we really need to come up with more data on this, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you very much. Anyone else? Any other comments from the floor? Any other comments from the floor? Any other comments from the floor?
Caleb Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Abernitis?
Yes.
Councilman Rob Gethrow?
Yes. Motion approves 5-0. All right. Consider release of casherries and certificates of release for the following: Golf View Manor, Unit 4, $1,198; Hall's First Edition, $1,239.50; Paragon Edition, $7,017.29. Mr. Vote, Jim, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is three small developments that meet all the standards that we have in place in our ordinance. Staff has made final inspections and of the site and it's appropriate to release those cashierities at this time.
Okay, pleasure of the board.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, the floor is closed. Motion, need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0, meeting is adjourned.